I call to order the Board of Trustees' special meeting for Tuesday, June 28, 2022, and the time is 6 o'clock. I'm sorry, 5 o'clock. Trustee Johnson, would you like to give the implication?
Sure. You'd like to provide a heads me. Your Honor, thank you for this day, and thank you for end of township here tonight. Thank you for the country we live in, our citizens, and I ask that you be with those who protect us and serve us and keep us safe. And I ask that you be with those loved ones or those people that go out in the world for us, and you would comfort them as our sons and daughters are out doing that work. Amen.
If I join you in the presentation, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please, Ms. Serian.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. McKee?
Here. I look to adopt the June 28 special meeting agenda as posted. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yes, the only thing I'd like to say is we should limit these special meetings. I tried to bring this up on June 7 to be discussed in June 21. And especially having these meetings at 5:00 PM when most public cannot attend, we've reverted back to the prior board's practices, and we need to be as transparent and accommodated as possible to the public.
Roll call?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Please come up to the podium and state your name and your address for the record.
Jack, could you turn that off?
I turned it on here.
Trustee, I was shot for it for Trail West. And looking over the agreement, one of the things I noticed was that the township was fronting all the expenses for the formation of this group. I do not feel our tax dollars in any way, shape, or form should be made to be used for this authority, whatever they want to call it. Because, one, it seems like obviously it is helping as the developers, not the citizens at the township.
Thank you. Is there any more comments? A new community authority, or NCA. I moved Resolution 2206 to 801, approving a form of declaration of covenants, restrictions, and agreements in integrative governmental agreement between the Township and Etna New Community Authority District A, and authorizing one or more members of the Board of Trustees to sign such instruments on behalf of the Township, and authorizing actions in support of such an approval as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I've got several items I'd like to... I think we should have some maybe information from our attorney on this.
Sure. Let me introduce you.
Absolutely.
Hi. How are you, Kim?
I am well. I'm Kip Wallace with Ice Miller in Columbus.
First, my question on the resolution, on the second page, Section 2, versus this board approves and authorizes any member of this board and any employee or representative with the Township to take such further actions. Isn't that pretty broad? Where, not saying they would, but a road crew employee could take action, Mr. Vance without authority, but like, shouldn't it be a board member or members of the board as?
It's really up to you. I mean, this is basically just standard language that is plenary. I mean, the board basically states the policy here, you know, with the agreements and with that, and basically it's authorizing whoever is associated with the township to take actions to promote the board's policy.
So would that be like the board itself or the president of the board?
Again, this is standard language typically when you adopt, when any board adopts a resolution for a purpose, basically it authorizes any member of that board and also employees or contractors to carry out the board policy as is necessary. So it doesn't really, doesn't need to be that way. I know there's, and I don't think it affects anything in connection with this resolution if we want to narrow it down.
So you said to carry out the board policy, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But my concern is if it's any point where I think they might not know the policies on that side, I do believe this should be either more directed to a certain person or authorized.
It is immaterial, I guess. You might consider whether Laura, for example, could do something, you know, whether she could certify, or anything else. So just, that's why it's there. It's not intended to be substantive. I think that, in any event, we're bored supervising everything. So however you want to do that is, I don't think it affects anything in the resolution.
That's still one of my concerns, but I think that should be more narrowly tailored. But then, question on the Community Authority Quokker Agreement. I know it's an older agreement from, I think, May '21.
Yes, sir. I don't know if I've got a copy of that before me, so you'll need to just lead me through it.
She's got maybe a copy.
All the copies I printed are the 6/24, then he sent them back.
Are you talking about?
No, this is about, this is the agreement of last board.
Yeah, I know that I had emailed, Laura, I know I emailed it to you.
Community Authority Quokker Agreement.
No, it's not. It is here.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, there it is. I apologize. Yes.
Page 2, number 3 expenses.
Yes.
In consideration of the developer's provision of services, her, the township agrees to pay the developer.
Yes.
Solely amount received by the township in payments from the NCA, an amount of $2,500 per year to be paid each year.
Yes.
Now, the township's not receiving any funds.
Correct. So at this point, I don't think there would be any, there is no obligation to pay those fees until those amounts are received. So this was something that was negotiated with Mr. Sabatino, and basically stepping up and serving as a statutory developer, which you needed to have, and that was the consideration for sort of his time and effort.
Okay.
That, you know, in doing this, and which has been substantial.
Okay. An alternative was you being the statutory developer.
We had talked about that, and it just wasn't.
Yeah, I know, it was a pleasure to curate this for him. So the statutory developer will get $2,000 from the NCA.
Well, from, I think it would be from township, from the township, from amounts paid.
And that will be reimbursed from the NCA.
Correct.
That's fine. If anybody else has any other questions, too?
Do you want to understand?
On the IGA, I mean, it looks like it was the same that you and I discussed prior, I think it was the draft dated 6/4, that we're going to talk about on the 6/7 meeting. But I did have a question on, where are you? Well, it looks like on the second page, there's a "with" missing in 3A. Authority incurred in connection accounting services, I believe it should be in connection with accounting services, just for clarity. And then on the B, the out-of-pocket expenses, I know Mr. Vance had brought up before, the extensive legal fees, $100,000 incurred by the, you know, during the prior board, those are all going to be reimbursed by the NCA, correct?
Yes.
Again, I think Section 3, Paragraph under D, there's some plural trustees should be in there, so Township Board of Trustees, I don't know if we want to...
Is this on?
Same page, page 2, second paragraph from the bottom.
In the 6.4.
Yes, I see.
As trustees.
Should be trustees. Then I did have a question on, and you and I discussed this before, and you added language underneath, in the Section 5, expenses to be covered by the township. I still think the way it's stated is a little ambiguous. Should it say expenses be covered by the township pending collection by the NCA? Because as written, it seems like the township's going to cover the treasurer expense and the indemnity of the developer, but then underneath it mentions administrative expenses. Is it clear that those are also administrative expenses?
Well, I'm not sure that the, that the treasurer, treasury expenses or indemnification, I don't expect there would ever be any indemnification expenses, five, that the authority is required to do that. I think what this is intended to be is that until the, because the way the flow of funds works is that redevelopment charges first go to the NCA, the first $25,000 is retained by the NCA. And once they have that, once they have that hot, then the township, you know, then it doesn't have any, you know, they need to use that money first before they go to the township.
But any funds expended by the township would be reimbursed by the NCA, including the treasurer?
Yes.
Okay. To me, like I said, just, it says expenses to be covered by township, period. But in all the other language, it states pending collection of the first insolvents from, do you think that needs to be clarified a little bit?
I think it could be. I think it could be.
Okay. I just want to make sure that that's...
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's a good, I think that's a good, I think that's a good comment.
I just, I just want to make sure that any expenses are that coming from the NCA, not the township.
Yes.
And then, it says any, Paragraph under 5B, any amounts, this is halfway through the paragraph, any amounts expended by the township in respect of the costs and expenses paid on behalf of the authority pursuant to the section shall be reimbursed to the township out of the expense reserved funded by the community development charges. Now, that reserve's only $25,000.
Right.
Say if our costs are $50,000, is that going to, that's not going to limit it to $25,000, $25,000?
Yeah, the $25,000 just sort of stays there, that's kind of their, that's kind of their nut. And so, in fact, that's really sort of how this whole section works, is that it really kind of reverts back to the flow of funds where you're getting it to, you know, to the extent you pay, pay something, they've got to pay it out.
I just want to make sure there's no limit in this, because as I said, the reserve is set at 25,000, so if we claim something that they can't say no and exceed the reserve.
Right.
And then page 4, as far as notices to the township, again, to the Board of Trustees, it should be plural with an S, just to state.
Apparently my, apparently, apparently, we're saving money on the S's.
And then, as we discussed before, working through this, Exhibit I, I understand that this language is taken from, I believe, the petition that was originally circulated regarding the other public improvements, and specifically like construction of a sewer pump station. And I know this is meant more for community park system and community center, walking paths and all that. And one of my concerns from the get-go has been the diversion of the funds to pay for developer infrastructure. Now, someday we have excess funding, and, you know, that's needed for one of the properties, maybe, but is there anything to more, kind of more constrain that to ensure, or are we just relying on the NCA board and the appointees to kind of approve the right things?
So the flow of funds really kind of takes care of most of that. So the way the flow of funds works is that you have the administrative expenses, then the township gets reimbursed for the costs established by the NCA. And then the third, the third bucket are projects that the township wants to undertake. They submit it to the NCA, and the NCA goes along, and they agree with it, and they pay for those costs in accordance with the township priorities. So this Exhibit A is intentionally broad so that the township priorities can be quite broad, so long as these community facilities benefit the area benefited by the community authority.
But...
Right, and so the only place where there's any discretion is if the township doesn't use that money, then the community, then the community authority can go ahead and with a project that it seeks to do with the consent of the Township Board of Trustees. And then there's, the last bucket is the residential charge, which the residential developer levies upon residences, and that is to be expended for purposes, he charges himself, he basically charges a two-mill charge.
Up to $25,000.
But he has to agree to whatever, whatever it is, on each, basically on each property that has a certificate of occupancy. And then that's to be used, that can be used for him to reimburse himself for public infrastructure, for sewer, or for things, for things like that. And so I think in the short term, there's not going to be a lot of money there anyway, because you don't get, the two mills is only levying on properties which are completed.
Right.
And I think in the longer term, I think what you do is you look at this, is this something that can be used as a tool for other developers as we see more residential development coming in, you know, coming into the township? And so that's why, that's why it's broad. Frankly, you know, there is, the township has this pretty well locked down from the uses. It's really, all of the monies are to be used for community facilities, which you all decide. The Community Authority Board has to go along with it.
Right.
But you also appoint three members of the board, and you're having interactions with the public members of the board.
And that's one of the changes we made in the beginning, where it was originally conceived that just whatever the township wanted, and they were kind of a rubber stamp.
Right.
And we kind of made it where they actually have authority, so it's important who we appointed, and that, and I'm glad we did that.
I think it's, I think that's a much better, I think it's a much better system that ensures that this is something that is very useful, that it makes more useful, frankly.
Right. It took control solely out of the township.
Correct.
It's got to be cooperative.
Correct.
Okay. And then, unless somebody has more questions on the IGA, add some questions on the declarations.
The one question I had was, the $25,000, when you get up to that, it's in the NCA?
Yes.
Is that a number that stays there, or does it float up and down? Or how does that work with, I mean, can there be $50,000 in there?
Well, I mean, I suppose, like, there can be if the money isn't being expended.
Okay.
But the $25,000 is really just intended to be as sort of an operating reserve for them, so that they can pay their administrative costs and things like that.
And it just gets replenished.
Correct.
So they might drop down below that, knowing there's a replenishment coming.
Right.
Okay. That's all.
And when does this, when, like, once we sign the agreement, and then you guys meet tomorrow, and then she's going to come, we meet tomorrow evenings, when does it start? Is it August when the money starts?
Well, we need to get this declaration that we're going to talk about filed, and all of the property owners need to sign that declaration. And so once they sign that declaration, the hope will be is that, you know, we can expedite this and get that money in, you know, in August. But I would, I do believe that what will happen, I would say by the beginning of fourth quarter of 2022 would be what I'm guessing, that's probably the timing, just given that we've got four, we've got a long agreement that has to be submitted to essentially three separate property owners and their council, and they're going to have to take some time to digest it. I am sure we're going to get a comment or two, because it's a long and complicated declaration. And then it has to be filed with the county auditor, and we have to get them to pay. I mean, my goal would be to get them to pay, you know, to get this, get the township or get the NCA charges paid by, you know, August 1st. I don't think, I think that's too aggressive, honestly. I mean, I'm just giving you a, realistically, what can happen.
Is there any consequences going after August 1st? Because I don't know before.
No, I mean, we need, we'll need to talk.
It'll take extra work.
Yeah, it'll just take extra work, extra, you know, we're just going to have additional work with the county, with the county and the county auditor to make sure that we can get those, get that funding in.
And this is why I brought it to the board on the 7th and 21st, as time is of the essence.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you being there to the board.
I didn't either.
Do you have, do you have anything you want to ask Mr. Vance?
I think the point of interest is due to, according to my calculations, in the existing commercial square footage, in the nine-cent charge per square foot, once we do start charging, it looks like the amount is approximately $183,000. And when everything's built out, that could actually increase to $246,000. And that's without the residential with the two mills.
Right. And there's also an additional property, I believe, associated with Exeter. Once we get this done, we will want to bring Exeter in as well, because they are receiving incentives from the township, and the township is obliged to bring, to bring anybody who is receiving CRA benefits into the NCA.
Now, do you have a copy of that? Because I've asked the township for a copy of the DCA. I think it was, it was a Core 5 that required an addition.
It would be the Core 5. I can look to see if I've got...
Can you forward that to me? Because I couldn't get a copy of that.
Okay. I will see what I, I'll see what I, see what we have in files on that.
I appreciate it.
We didn't, we didn't, we didn't do that agreement, but...
If you just have it.
I might, I might have it, so.
And then I just had questions on the declaration. All right, we've got the two mills on the residential, but that's going straight to the developer.
Page 2, please.
I'm on page 10 now. Okay. Section 5.04. And I brought this up before, the fixed nine cents per square foot fee on here, over time, that, the value of that is going to diminish with inflation, especially inflation now, 9.8%. I mean, I think we're down to eight cents of the worth of it from starting in the year. I mean, at 5% inflation in 10 years, that's going to be a little, about half that. So whereas on the residential, the two mills, as the property increases, you're kind of keeping up with inflation. And I see other parts of here that the valuation can be waived, can be reduced, but there's nothing to increase it.
Why? That was what was negotiated.
Is that something that can be changed now?
I don't think so. I think that this was, I think this was negotiated with Core 5 and its council, and we went back, and I think originally there was a proposal that there would be a millage charge. They objected to that strenuously. What they're interested in, or what they were interested in, was predictability. And so the only way, I mean, you can negotiate something different with somebody else who comes into the, comes into the NCA. You could, you are certainly free to do that, but I, but that is a, that is a baseline. So the only way that you could negotiate something, an increase or a change in that, a change in that, would be you need to go back to each property owner and say, gee, I want to increase your charge, will you agree to it? And right, and unless you have some leverage or a reason to do it, they're probably not going to be, you know, I don't know whether they would be receptive. I think where, what you all probably need to think about going forward is building in something for folks who come in after, or to the extent that you have existing folks who want, who want more from the township, maybe that's something where you can go back and you could amend this, and they could agree to a higher charge.
Wait, initially, we've got all the leverage with incentives and all that. That's the only reason they're part of the NCA, but we're talking with the other developers. They don't want to be part of it, but if they have to to get those incentives, they're going to agree to it. So, but this agreement and the declarations allow for that separate agreement on those coming in, that we could put some kind of inflationary index in there or ability to increase that?
We could, we could do that. That is, that is a possibility. I think we would have to think about how it's to be implemented, because you have, you know, because it's a governmental charge, there's equal protection concerns and things like that. So I haven't, I haven't, I haven't really thought about it yet, but I, but I, but I would tell you that there is a way to get it done, it's just a matter of documenting it properly.
Is there anything, my concern is we lock something to now that will preclude us from doing that.
It does, this does not preclude you from asking for more. You can always ask, you can always ask for more.
Okay.
You can't, you can't, you can't, you can't agree that somebody can come in and pay less, but you can always ask for more. Because your existing property owners are...
We can't agree to less because of that agreement with Core 5?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So these charge administrator, that, I know there's a 1% sales tax on retail, but there's no retail on these, that's just for the future. On page 18, you answered my question about the increase. Between Section 8.01 regarding, where it says, provided that no waiver, reduction, or termination of the community development charge shall be effective without the owner of such properties' consent and without the consent of the township, where in 8.04 on the next page, it lists the discretion of the board indicating that, subject to the provisions of the declarations, the decision to waive, reduce, or terminate the community development charge shall otherwise be solely within the discretion of the board. And then at the top of that page, it also states in a different way, shall be effective without the owner of such properties' consent or the consent of the township, that or, shouldn't that be an and, the township?
No waiver shall be effective without the owner such properties' consent.
At the top of the page, it says or.
Or the consent.
Whereas the other one, it's and.
I think that's probably an or that operates as an and, but I'm willing to, I'm willing to just make it, turn that or into an and, because I think that's probably the right answer.
Okay.
I mean, I sort of would read it, I would read that or as an and regardless. That's what lawyers do, apparently.
Okay. Just to me, or is or, and is both?
And on that discretion of the board, I read that language as being subject to 8.01 and 8.03 above. I don't view that there's any possibility that charges can be eliminated without consent of the township.
Okay. And like I said, that first part of the 8.01 paragraph, to me, again, maybe legally, it reads differently, shall be effective without the owner of such properties' consent and without the consent of the township. It almost reads like, without the consent of the township, we don't need it, because it's stated differently in the document. Or am I wrong?
I, you know, I'm willing to...
I just want to make sure there's no ambiguity.
I think it's, I think this is a, I think it's fine, I'm going to mark that as changed to make it into the document.
Anybody else have a question? If I'm looking for mine, feel free. I can't answer that one. Okay. That's all the questions I had. And the only other question I had is on the appointees, the township appoints three people.
Yes.
And who are they supposed to represent, the interests of the township, the interests of, how is it created?
So the, the answer is, under the NCA law, they represent the interests of the quote developer. Under the cooperative... developer. Under the, under the cooperative agreement, the township basically has, has the right to direct the statutory developer to appoint two, two of the three, two of the three members. And under those circumstances, they should be representing the interests of the township.
Okay.
Okay.
So you're, you're just saying they should be able to appoint two of the three, but the township appoints?
The township doesn't appoint, the township directs the statutory developer to appoint two, two folk, two folks selected by the township. So in this case, the way that it worked is I believe that Mr. Sabatino was the statutory developer, Mr. Ron Sabatino was the statutory developer representative. And then, it was agreed that the other two representatives would be.
RJ's son.
Right, his.
And then the employee of T.
RJ and, and Mr. Hayes, yes. Both of whom I believe are employed by T and R Properties.
So the statutory developer's supposed to appoint the two that are directed by the township?
Right. So, so.
And then the other one is just the township appoints?
No, no, the other one is.
The other one's statutory.
Yeah, statutory developer always, always has one that they can put on the board regardless.
Just wanna be clear on that.
Yes.
Any other questions? I'm done. The man?
All right.
Okay, roll call? We already got the second, two second, we're in discussion, we just came out of discussion, now we can go to a roll call.
Just for the record, the market asked for a change, are you not making a change? Are you making a change?
I mean, I make a, a motion to change Section 2 to, to remove, to strike any employee or representative of the township. I, I think it should be a board member that, that authorizes any changes or makes any agreements or.
Madam President, if appropriate.
Yes.
Are those appointments, or, I, I read it as those representatives are at the direction of the board. So all, the majority of three trustees would have to decide whether or not that employee would be a good pick or a bad pick, not just any employee who wants to play that role. Okay, that's all I got.
So.
So I made the motion.
You made the motion, is there a second? There's a second. Roll call.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
If you'll wait, I'll update this one clean version when you will sign.
That would be good. We've also got, um, accidents, Oregon.
Thank you.
Park property, is there a update on the park property, Mr. Singleton issue?
Yes, ma'am, I had, had a meeting at the planning commission today with Nick Cavalleres and the planning commission. The GVW property is scheduled to close on Friday. The Garen property will be closed either Thursday or Friday. Those two properties will be done. At that point, we're just waiting on the approval of the planner, the development plan from the county for the liable property. Then we can close on that and take title to it also.
Excellent. Thanks for that, Dave.
What about the Snyder property?
It'll be done by Friday.
Is there a reason for a delay? Because you had indicated it was gonna be last Friday. That was.
No, they filed last Friday. That will be completed, everything will be closed by this Friday.
But is that the 30th?
July 1st is the deadline.
I thought the 30th was the deadline.
It's by July 1st. It'll be done, everything was done today.
Hey, John, you worked pretty hard to get that.
I'm, I'm having a discussion, please.
Okay, I just think.
I, in my conversation with Mr. Snyder, he had indicated that the deadline was 30th. Is that incorrect?
Apparently, because he turns it up to July 1st. It will be done by July, by July 1st, yes.
Madam President, just to confirm, the township has taken care of all its related responsibilities associated with the purchase contract. And then Mr. Singleton did a fantastic, fantastic job in the short time that I've witnessed his performance and representation in these regards.
Thank you.
We showed great concerns, by the way, on that.
I appreciate that. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Someone?
Roll call? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a second? No, second. Roll call?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. 536.